Good evening, Thousand Oaks. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for October 21st, 2024. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or telephone conference. Number two, please rise and for the pledge of allegiance.
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Vice Chair Link?
Present.
Chair Lanson?
Here. Number four, tonight we have the extreme honor of actually having our Community Development Director Kelvin Parker. Mr. Parker, are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances?
Thank you, Chair. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. We do have one supplemental packet item related to Item 7A on the agenda, which we'll get to shortly. Other than that, there are no continuances or written comments at this time.
Sounds good. I'm looking over at the Secretary. Do we have any general comments?
No.
We will skip number five and go to six. Next, we have the consent calendar with contains the minutes for September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Do any of my fellow Commissioners have any comments or a motion? Mr. Link?
I have a comment. The minutes note that both myself and Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut were absent. Insofar as I remember, we were here on the 23rd.
I do remember you being here.
I hope so. Otherwise, that was a...
So, subject to that modification, do I have a motion to approve subject to that additional information?
I would move.
Please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut? Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
And Chair Lanson?
Yes.
And Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
He was here last week or last night, but he's here today.
Unless it was a bad hallucination, then I...
Mr. Chairman, can I just get clarification? Did we approve the minutes or did we approve the consent calendar, which then also included the 2025 schedule?
To my knowledge, the only thing in the consent calendar was the minutes, but is there two things? Okay, that's what my list here says, so I guess we should probably redo that then. Chair, I would just go for the minutes where I think are approved, so I would go to Item 6B, which is the 2025 Planning Commission meeting schedule, and just do a separate motion for that. Do I have a motion with regard to Item 6B?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferris. Please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, on to Item 7. Would the Secretary please open the public hearing for Item 7A?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A Municipal Code Amendment MCA 2024-70003 to amend Articles 2, 21, and 25 of Chapter 4 of Title IX, as well as Article 5 of Chapter 10 of Title IX of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code to implement the 2021 to 2029 Housing Element Program 8 for zoning code amendments addressing state housing and land use mandates related to manufactured homes, density bonus, emergency shelters, residential care facilities, and transitional supportive farm worker and employee housing, and to find that pursuant to Sections 1, 5, 1, 8, 3, and 1, 5, 1, 6, 8, C, 2, 5 of the Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, no further environmental document is required because the proposed actions are consistent with the city's goals, policies, and anticipated programs contained in the adopted general plan and housing element under a certified program, Environmental Impact Report, EIR. Located citywide, the applicant is the city of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, and my understanding is we have Associate Planner Angela Georgiev. Present.
Actually, the presentation this evening is going to be given by Senior Planner Ian Holt, and he is joined by a host of planning staff, including Ms. Georgiev.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I will be going through the presentation, and if there's any questions afterward, we have the rest of the staff that can assist with that. So, yeah, good evening. As stated by the Planning Commission Secretary, the item before you is the Municipal Code Amendment 2024-7003. Essentially, is for the implementation of Program 8 of the Housing Element. As previously stated, I will be amending Articles 2, 21, and 25 of Chapter 4, Title IX, as well as Article 5 of Chapter 10 of Title IX of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code for the purposes of updating the code for state housing and land use mandates related to manufactured homes, density bonus, emergency shelters, residential care facilities, transitional and supportive housing, and farm worker and employee housing. Just as some background, the Housing Element has 18 programs and actions that are necessary for the city to implement in order to meet our regional housing needs allocation. Maintaining the Housing Element certification is reliant upon implementation of these items in a timely manner, and we basically report these annually to the Department of Housing and Community Development. In particular, the item for you is implementing Housing Element Goal 1, providing a wide range of housing opportunities for persons of all incomes, and specifically Program 8. The proposed amendment before you this evening will ensure that the Municipal Code definitions and use provisions are consistent with the state law requirements in reducing barriers to housing for vulnerable populations, and also for consistency with the density bonus So specifically, there are a variety of topics in front of you. First, we will be amending definitions for dwelling unit, one-family dwelling, residential care facilities, and supportive housing. The next portion of the code amendment will be addressing the permitted use matrices and introducing those housing types into the use matrices as required by state law, as well as amending Emergency Shelter Section under Article 25, as well as actually Article 27 for transitional and supportive housing, and then ultimately amend the Density Bonus chapter of the Affordable Housing portion of the Municipal Code. So California Government Code Section 65852.3 regulates the installation of manufacturing manufactured homes that meet federal and safety and construction standards as certified by the National Manufacturing Housing Construction and Safety Standards Act of 1974 as a single dwelling unit in residential zones within local jurisdictions. And Health and Safety Code Section 18007 defines manufactured homes as single-family dwellings. The objective for you is to ensure that manufactured homes are treated just like any other single-family home. In practice, the city already does this, however, it's not explicitly defined in our code, so we're essentially just amending the definitions to incorporate manufactured Next, we have revisions to the Density Bonus Section of the code. The state Density Bonus Law has been amended over 20 times since its inception under SB 2280, when it went into effect, to minimize the administrative burden of frequently amending the municipal code in response to changes to the Density Bonus Law and the given the inability on almost a yearly basis as it relates to the state Density Bonus Law to update the code. Staff recommends amending the code to directly reference the state law. So, direct reference to the state Density Bonus Law within the municipal code avoids need for updating a potential new legislation as it gets adopted. The program provisions will do include, you know, application and review sections related to density bonus plans, as well as points to the inclusionary housing program for design, timing construction, access to amenities, as well as the terms of affordability for those units that are within a density bonus project. Next topic is emergency and transitional housing. In particular, under AB 139, parking requirements must be based solely on the shelter staffing level. Currently, in the Municipal Code, we do provide or require .2 spaces per each resident within the code. That would need to be removed in order to be compliant with state law, but we will still be retaining the one space per staff during the largest shift at an emergency shelter. Furthermore, in order to remove barriers to development of supportive housing, this bill requires supportive housing developments with 50 or fewer units to be permitted by right, and that's within a 60-day application process. They have to occur in zones where multifamily and mixed-use developments are permitted, provided the development meets certain requirements. According to the law, developments with more than 50 units have a review timeline of 120 days, but are not required to be approved through a ministerial process. Staff has updated the use matrices to reflect the allowance of supportive housing with 50 or units or less in the R2, R3, RPD, and mixed-use zones. These same zoning designations include a path of permitting for more than 50 units with a special use permit. The next housing type is farm worker employee housing. In order to meet the requirements of the Health and Safety Code under the State Employment Housing Act, specifically pertaining to farm worker and employee housing, definitions have been drafted for farm worker dwelling, which includes, which is basically a single-family house for six or fewer employees, and farm worker housing complex, which is up to 12 units and 36 beds. The permitted land use matrix for both residential and non-residential zones is being updated with this ordinance to allow for farm worker dwellings and farm worker housing complexes. Just as a note, the Ventura County Resource Management Agency conducted a farm worker housing study. Over 400 surveys were submitted and completed, however, none were, none of the respondents were from within the city of Thousand Oaks. In terms of the zones that farm worker dwellings are allowed by right, would be RE, RA, C3, C4, and M1 zoning designations, and farm worker housing complex would be allowed in the same zones with a special use permit. Next is residential care facilities. Unlicensed care homes, which provide room and board and some level of personal care services but are not licensed by the state, fill some of the gaps in the availability of housing and services for people with special needs. These unlicensed care homes are referred to by several different names, such as boarding care homes, boarding combs, and adult care homes. HCD has clarified that both licensed and unlicensed facilities are allowed for both small and large residential facilities. So the only update that we're doing here tonight is the definitions related to residential care facilities in the Municipal Code. What you see here in green is the new language associated with both the large and small residential care facilities. And it also includes that unlicensed facility means that the tenants are exempt from federal and state licensing requirements. Another component of the code update is for emergency shelters. Under AB 2339, that expanded the definition of emergency shelters to include interim interventions, including navigation centers, bridge housing, respite, and recuperative Under the adoption of Ordinance 1726 NS back in March of 2024, we satisfied the requirement of permitting emergency shelters by right in a mixed-use zone. That ordinance in of itself also satisfied allowing low-barrier navigation centers to be allowed by right in the same zone, since they fall under the umbrella of emergency One of the other components of the legislation was to evaluate the objective standards associated with emergency shelters. In review of the existing standards within the code, the only, the only one condition was revised to basically remove the term promptly, a subjective term, and replace it with within 48 hours for the purposes of the timeframe that litter removal would have to be performed for any operating emergency shelter or low-barrier navigation center. The remaining standards are objective under Government Code Section 65583 and 65863. In evaluating the Municipal Code Amendment before you, we're going to go over the general plan consistency. The code amendments before you implement goal promote a diversity of housing types for the Thousand Oaks residents through all stages of homes. In particular, Policy 3.1, a diversity of housing which promotes a diversity of housing types and locations throughout the city, specifically in neighborhood areas that contain goods and services, parks and open space, and public schools in a walkable setting, as well as Policy 3.5, housing for special needs. Support housing for older adults, special needs groups, including those with developmental disabilities, and non-traditional family groups by allowing a diverse range of housing configurations and universally accessibly designed features. Goal Land Use 4 is supporting the creation of safe, affordable, and sanitary housing for all ages and income abilities. Particularly, Policy 4.5 is increase the number and diversity of affordable housing stock within the city and encourage housing of a variety of income levels and unit sizes. Based on this consistency with the general plan and the implementation of the Housing Element, it's recommended option that this Municipal Code amendment is consistent with the general plan. So moreover, amending the code allows the city to continue reporting to HCD that the Housing Element is being implemented in timely fashion, essential for maintaining the city's Housing Element certification. The proposed ordinance update will support the housing types by creating opportunity for those vulnerable communities to have housing, and also help the city meet its regional housing needs allocation while establishing the legal framework for which these housing types could go forward. Before I get to the recommendation, before you, you also have a supplemental packet. Within that packet, there are a few corrections I would like to just kind of cite for the record. Under Attachment 2, there is a correction to the spelling under Section 9-4, 2527, under Transitional and Supportive Housing. Also, there was some formatting cleanup that would need to occur in the permitted use matrix for residential zones, which is on Page 3, Part 2. And then also, there has been some editing to the language to Section 9-10.503, the city review and approval of density bonus. The specific language is removing the language is able to make the and replaced with makes the requisite findings for denial under the state density bonus law. So with that, staff's recommendation is to find the proposed action requires no further environmental document pursuant to Sections 1, 5, 1, 8, 3, 1, 5, 1, 6, 8, C, 2, 5 of SEQA, because the proposed action is consistent with the city's goals, policies, programs contained in the adopted general plan and housing element under the certified program, EIR. Recommend to the City Council adoption of the Municipal Code Amendment 2024-7003 to implement the city's 2021 to 2029 Housing Element. And with that, that would conclude my presentation, and Angela, and Justine, and myself are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. It's ironic you're sitting here. I think it was Mr. Parker, Commissioner McMahon, and I, seven years ago, went to a Planning Commission conference where the first concept of needing to amend your general plan came up, and have it come full circle seven years later by this. So thank you for your report. Commissioner, questions? Commissioner McMahon?
Just one question. It seems like a lot of these terms are fairly new. I mean, since the state and the cities and the counties are all focusing so hard on affordable housing and emergency shelters. So, under the new definition of emergency shelters... So, under the new definition of emergency shelters, they're talking about navigation centers, bridge housing, respite, or recuperative housing. Somewhere in the document, are those definitions available? Because they're all kind of new terms.
Those terms aren't specifically in the definitions or in the proposed code amendment before you. Those are terms that are used within the statute, so essentially by virtue of being consistent with the government code.
Okay, so they are available somewhere.
Yes.
If somebody is reading this, they'll be able to find what they specifically mean.
And Commissioner McMahon, if I may, to add to staff's comment, when we, when we brought the navigation center that we have that's being developed right now in the city, we brought that before you, we had to actually add the definition of navigation center, and the reason why we had to do that was because under the umbrella of emergency shelter, there was a limitation of how long a person could stay at that shelter, and knowing that we had this new navigation center that we have never had before, and knowing that the state had just changed the law for the navigation center definition to say it was transitional housing and said different type of housing, but it's again, under the umbrella of emergency shelter, we changed that definition to ensure that a person was not going to be limited to six months, if necessary, who was staying at the shelter. So, it just shows you, you are correct, that there is all these new things that are happening, and again, it shows the overall theme of the state trying to come up with different types of housing, as Mr. Holt mentioned tonight, and obviously transitional housing, emergency shelter type of housing is one of those.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what everybody was talking about. That's all. So, thank you.
That's a good point. Any other questions? Commissioner questions? Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holt, for the overview of the package we have in front of us. So, one thing that I just wanted to narrow in on, I wasn't quite sure if I saw it in the slides of the presentation, but I think it's in, in the recommended changes to the ordinances regarding farm worker housing, either the dwelling unit or the housing complex. It, I'm not quite sure, that has a narrow, slightly narrower definition than what might have been presented. People, those dwelling units, they have to be employed full-time and working on-site with respect to agricultural, or one or more farm workers working on-site. Is that correct? That's part of the new definition?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Ferris. So, there are specific definitions, both for farm worker dwelling and for the farm worker housing complex. So, the differentiation is with the farm worker dwelling, that would involve like the conversion of a single-family dwelling, and that would be for six or fewer people, and they do need to work on the actual location. As for the farm worker housing complex, the requirement isn't for them to work on the exact site, but they do need to work within the city of Thousand Oaks. So, as Mr. Holt was mentioning earlier with the new county survey, the likelihood of having that level of housing need for farm workers is pretty minute.
Right. And I think that this is the reason I just wanted to kind of call it out. I wasn't sure if it was part of the presentation, but there, there are specific narrowing conditions that have to work within the city. They, they can't, they can't just put a farm worker housing complex somewhere and go work somewhere else outside of the city in agriculture. That doesn't qualify under the definition.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Perfect. Thanks, that's all. I just want a clarification on it.
Any other questions, Commissioners of staff? I actually don't have a question, just a comment. I actually spent a fun time during the weekend during a football game connecting the dots and trying to make sure everything was there, and again, you guys should take this on tour and give other cities a lesson on how to prepare this. You guys did a fantastic job. Thank you for all the time and effort and the extensive involvement of making sure everything connected and it was defined. You guys did a fantastic job, so with that, I have no further questions. I'm assuming, let me ask, do we have any general comments, Adam Secretary?
No.
No questions. I'm assuming you don't want to follow up unless you have further things you want to add. So with that, I will close the public hearing and ask my Commissioners for comments or Commissioner Ferris?
Happy to make a motion. I'll move that we adopt a resolution based on the findings contained therein, recommending that the City Council find that the proposed action requires no further environmental document pursuant to Sections 15183 and 15168(c)(25) of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, because the proposed actions are consistent with the city's goals, policies, and programs contained in the adopted general plan and housing element under a certified program, Environmental Impact Report, EIR, and that we adopt an ordinance approving MCA 2024-7003 amendments to Articles 2, 21, and 25 of Chapter 4, Title IX, and Article 5 of Chapter 10, Title IX, of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, as presented in the resolution and as amended by the staff report.
Sounds good. Please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And as this is a recommendation to the City Council, there's no appeal period. That is Item 7. Let's go on to Department 8. There's Department report says none. Number 9, Commission comments and AB 1234, reports, comments, or reports? Commissioner Ferris?
Just a note, and I'm asked the city attorney on this. I think in my haste of asking for a recommendation or approval for 6B, I did not include the finding that the action is not a project, project as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act. Would you, how is your preferred remedy to ensure that that's part of it?
I think we're okay with, with that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I will just add, for those of you, please get out and vote. That's your right, that's your privilege, and that's your power. Let's go on to staff update. Mr. Parker, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
No announcements. Just want to mention that our next Planning Commission meeting, we have a robust agenda with three items currently slated, and that'll take place in November on the 8th.
And I look forward to having you sit here again. I get, maybe not. With that, we will adjourn our Planning Commission meeting to November 18th at 6:00 PM. Good night, Thousand Oaks.